This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to call the April 11th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, meet the flag of the United States of America, the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Greg, will you do the roll call?
David, you're recording. There we go. Trevor Donbach.
Here.
Tim Dugan. Remote. Todd Farringer.
Here.
Ryan Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Gluth.
Here.
David Wilson. Not remote? Okay. Five members are present, sufficient for a quorum.
I would like to also announce that our, we have our alternate solicitor this evening, Mr. Leo DeVito, and our Assistant Township Engineer, Aaron Bet, as well as Dave Manhart, Director of Community Development for the township, Greg Adams, our planner, and Laura Harrier, our zoning officer. Will you go over the meeting rules, please, Greg?
Yes. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may be fully able to participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. In order that both in-person and remote attendees may hear all comments and questions, all in-person attendees will be required to use microphones at all times. We request that remote attendees, please mute your microphone and telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. Turn the podium microphone on and state your name, address, and comment or question. Please turn the podium microphone off when done. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone, state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute all callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes of the March 14th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any corrections or changes required? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain from me, sorry.
And one abstention. So it passes four with one abstention. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the subdivision review. This is in six parts. It starts with a township staff presentation, then the township engineer presentation, the applicant presentation, planning commission discussion, audience questions and comments, and then the planning commission decision. So our first item is the Exesthetic Surgery Associates Medical Office Building, major plan 2023, 106. This is a request for preliminary and final plan review. Greg, will you do the township staff presentation?
Yes. This is an application to develop the property located at 1619 Hausmann Road. The plan proposes to construct a two-story, 32,379 square foot medical office building and an 87 space parking lot on the 2.61 acre parcel. The property is to be served by public water and public sewer and is zoned highway commercial HC. 1619 Hausmann Partners LLC is the owner and applicant. The community development department recommends that the planning commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor. That sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted. That such security shall be available for draws, presentations, no further than 60 miles from the township office, and evidence of insurance coverage in an amount satisfactory to township in its sole discretion be provided to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant address to the satisfaction township engineer the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida as contained in his review dated April 4th, 2024. The applicant shall provide to the community development department written confirmation from the appropriate reviewing agency that all applicable comments have been addressed. Three, that the applicant address to the satisfaction township water and sewer engineer the comments of Mr. Jason Newhard as contained in his review dated April 5, 2024. Four, that the applicant address to the satisfaction township geotechnical consultant the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor as contained in his review later dated March 28th, 2024. Five, that the applicant address to the satisfaction of the community development department the comments of Mr. Greg Adams as contained in his review dated April 4th, 2024. Six, that the applicant address the satisfaction of the public works department the community comments of Mr. Herb Bender as contained in his review dated January 18th, 2024. Seven, that the applicant complies with the April 8th, 2024 Recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board. Eight, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the Southside Hall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to the township's water and sewer service are concerned. The applicant shall provide this community development department written confirmation from the appropriate reviewing agencies after all applicable comments have been addressed, including but not limited to payment of allocation fees prior to plan recording and payment of tapping fees prior to building permit issuance. Nine, that the applicant obtains a review from the LVPC confirming that the drainage plan is consistent with the Act 67 requirements. I believe they have done that. Ten, that the applicant attains a letter from PADEP and/or LCCD approving the NPDS application pursuant to Section 31239E of SALDO. Eleven, that the applicant attains a letter from PADEP approving a sewage facilities planning module or exemption there, too. Twelve, the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional right-of-way along the frontage of Hausmann Road at a width acceptable to the township. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor. An opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating that the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor description of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer and a copy of the current deed for the property showing current ownership and recording information. Thirteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township as utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to township for accessing the water meter pit. The dedication shall occur in the same manner as the previous comment condition. Fourteen, that the applicant shall agree upon satisfactory completion of all storm sewer, water, and sanitary sewer facilities shown in the plan as intended for dedication to the township to execute former formal bill of sales for said facilities so as to convey said facilities to the township for nominal consideration. Fifteen, that the applicant shall execute a declaration of covenants and easements for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by township solicitor for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. Sixteen, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. And seventeen, that the plans are to be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. The planning commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is October 3rd, 2024. The Board of Commissioners's hard deadline to act on the plan is also October 3rd, 2024.
Thank you, Greg. Now it's time for the township engineer presentation. Will Assistant Engineer Bet?
Sure. As mentioned in our April 4th memo to the township, a preliminary final land development review was performed by our office. Some comments to note from our review pertain to stormwater management and general drafting requirements. We believe that the remaining stormwater management comments, which may appear lengthy, can be completed prior to plan recording without major adjustments and should not impact the overall layout and stormwater management design. There were six waiver requests as listed in our memo, and we had deferred to the township geotech consultant for two of them. As noted in the packet, the township geotech has no objection to supporting the waivers regarding a liner and a basin bottom slope. We have no engineering objection to the remaining four requests. At this time, conditioned on addressing items in our April 4th memo, we can recommend engineering approval.
Thank you. Next is the applicant presentation. Will the applicant? Please identify themselves and...
Eric Shock, Fitzpatrick, Lenson, Booba.
Don Peters, Bowler.
Thanks. Thanks. Yeah, so recall, we were here a couple of months ago. I think at that time, we went through the waiver requests, and we took away from that, that there didn't seem to be any objection to those. There were a few other open items. There was some stormwater detail that your engineer wanted from Bowler. There were a couple of items, as mentioned, where they wanted the geotech to weigh in, and we were waiting to make sure we were clean on zoning, which we thought we were, but now your zoning officer has confirmed we don't have any zoning issues. So at this point, we need recommendations on the waivers and hopefully on the plan. And the recommendation that Mr. Adams read, acceptable to us. And I think Don absolutely agrees with your engineer that everything is manageable and all that's left are what we would call a bunch of will comply comments that we will be able to achieve without much heavy lift. So with that, we can run through all the waivers again, if you'd like, to talk about those individually, refresh them. That's fine. If you have questions on them, do that. And then the same with the plan. Because otherwise, this really hasn't changed all that much, right? The building still looks the same. You know, everything is pretty much, from a planning perspective, what it was last time.
I did notice that you put the sidewalk from the road to the building, so I very appreciate...
Things like that have been reflected, yeah?
What we'll do is we'll ask the board if they have any questions on the plan itself, and then we'll get to the waivers. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments regarding this plan?
I do know.
I do have one question for the applicant. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission letter dated January 31st, 2024. There was a notation that the parcel has a swath of hydroxic soils running through it, and they recommended that the Natural Resources Conservation Service be, have this verified to see if these soils are listed there. Has that been done?
Yeah, we've done that. Don will explain in more detail, but it actually, it's kind of a crazy instance where that little portion was actually caused by a septic tank and nothing having to do with anything to be protected, correct?
So there's specific soil types that list as to having the potential to potentially have wet soils. There, we performed a wetland evaluation. But it was determined by the wetland scientist that at least 50% of the cause of that was often collecting stormwater overflowing. Spoke with DEP. They agree that the wetland is isolated, can be filled in. Permits that we need to acquire were applying for a small pocket. It's shown on the existing features. Actually, within the building footprints, so the whole area is actually going to be activated in building construction. Additionally, as part of the NPDS requirements, we have to complete a PNDI search, which looks for sensitive features like that. We completed that. We have all clearance letters associated with that, and they've been submitted to the...
Aaron, can you confirm? Was that given to you, Aaron?
Off the top of my head, I don't know if we have the PNDI, but...
I can most certainly provide a copy of the PNDI and the associated clearance letters. Absolutely, they are 100% required by the Conservation District DEP, so...
Typically, before they get NPDS approval, that needs to be cleared, so...
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Before we get into the waiver discussion, we're going to ask the audience, which doesn't appear, there's anybody in person? Is there anybody online with a question or comment? Yeah. So, okay, we have two versions of waivers. There's the Pidcock Company on page 29 has the review of the waivers, and then the applicant's letter is on page 40. Do we want to go through these individually or do them all together? Because we discussed them...
I think like the first three are basically your standard waivers that we almost get on every plan, which is the 400 feet, the 100-foot requirements.
Yep.
Or obviously, our engineer saying they don't have any issue with the concrete driveway apron.
Right.
And the last two would have been up to the geotech, and of course, we do have confirmation that the geotech has no objections to the waivers. I don't know if we want to go through them all, or if we need to go through them all.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if our engineer and the geotechnical consultant have no issues with E and F, I am just doing a vote on all six waivers.
Okay.
There is one thing I would like to add. B and C within our letter, we would just ask the section be revised. It appears there'd be a typo in that, but that would be the R only comment.
So section B, and it was referred to as SALDO 31223B20, and the engineer, our engineer, said it actually should be SALDO 31212B20.
Oh, right.
And also C is very similar. It's SALDO 31223, and it should be 31212B21.
I would suggest with those corrections that we just briefly do them one at a time to have the correct numbers reflected in the record.
Understood. Do I hear a motion to approve the first SALDO waiver of SALDO 31212B15, a waiver from the requirement of showing contours on adjacent land within 400 feet of the track?
Make a motion? Grant the waiver?
I will second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next is SALDO 312-23B20. This is a waiver from the requirement of showing the look...
Wrong number.
What? Oh. Understood. So it's going to be a waiver from SALDO 31212B20, which is the waiver from the requirement of showing the location, character, and elevation of any building within 100 feet of the track. Are motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Next will be SALDO 31212B21, which is a waiver from the requirement of showing locations and widths of all sidewalks, trails, driveways, streets, easements, and right-of-way within 400 feet of the track. Do I hear a motion to approve this waiver? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions. Next is SALDO 312-35B3A4, which is a waiver from the requirement of providing a concrete driveway apron. Do I hear a motion to approve this waiver?
Motion to approve it?
Greg have a question?
I'm sorry.
They are showing a painted stripe across there. So I would say to the extent shown on the plan.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the SALDO 31235B3A4 as depicted on sheet number C401 of Bowler's grading plan that depicts the line striping at the entrance.
Second the motion?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is SMP 296, or 296-11T, which is a waiver from the requirement to provide a liner within the irrigation beds. The geotechnical consultant has confirmed that this is okay with them.
May I ask a question and point of clarification just quickly?
Absolutely.
Sorry. Are we talking PVC liner, clay liner, or just liner in general?
Just irrigation beds, so we're going...
Okay. Thank you.
Did we get motion?
I'll make a motion to grant SMP 29611T.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, it's SMP 296-18R4B, which is a waiver from the requirement to provide a minimum longitude slope of 2% across the basin floor. Do I hear a motion to approve this waiver?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further comments? For many...
Are we doing a motion on granting additional preliminary final based on the... We're making a motion?
Right. Yep. Is there anybody online, any questions? So next is recommending final, a preliminary final approval to the Board of Commissioners as depicted in Greg's memo or letter. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the applicant complying with the conditions listed.
Wait here a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good luck.
Good luck with your project.
See you.
Good luck.
Next is the comprehensive plan reexamination report. Who's handling this one?
I guess.
Is that you, Mr. Manhart?
So at the last meeting, we reviewed the reexamination report, discussed and went through some of the questions that we kind of drafted up as discussion points. So what we have before us is the draft reexamination report. I can go through some changes, and there are some questions that I want to try and get some clarification. And then I think what we could do is recommend it to the Board of Commissioners with any changes we discuss tonight. Changes that we do, we have some minor formatting changes planned. We'll work through that. Nothing will change with the content. There are some typos here and there. We're going through those. We will certainly address those. And on page, it's in my staple, 72. The last sentence there, and this is kind of one of the things I want to get some clarification on. At the last meeting, we talked about frequency and how often we should be doing this. A lot of the questions, there were no changes because it was one year, one year ago. So this last sentence talks about doing it by any, by any only, so every two years. Or unless something comes up. So that's kind of, and then in the recommendation page, we have the same statement, except it says annually. So that's the other thing to think about, and we can make those changes and put those in the report to go to the planning commission or to the Board of Commissioners. The biggest piece of this reexamination report at this time, being one year in, is really an update to the implementation items. Just to give the planning commission idea of what's been happening, I know we had talked about in the annual report of keeping the planning commission more informed on what's going on, which will be worked into, we have it as a standing agenda item. And so that, having this update to the implementation plan is really that annual function that I kind of see. The questions are more aligned with if something big came up that we needed to or wanted to look at a zone change or an amendment or things that may trigger us to look at something new with the comprehensive plan. So there's kind of two things going on in these reexamination, in the reexamination report. We have the implementation status update, and then we have these big questions and bigger ideas. The bigger ideas I see is, as we experienced, is this one year in, there's not a lot to change. But perhaps two years in, or as needed, we can look at that. And then implementation, we've been busy this last year, so there's a lot to cover. But that slows down, hopefully, at some point. We'll get closer to it. So those are some ideas with the timing that I'd like to get some feedback on. The rest of it remains pretty much the same. We did kind of answer the questions in the evaluation. You know, again, looking at major problems, Ridge Farm is one of the big projects coming in that we will likely have to consider moving forward related to impacts that we might experience as part of that as it's getting built out and as we're seeing road improvements and whether there's increased traffic or however things develop as part of that. So we wanted to kind of put that on the radar. I think we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting. Question two is kind of the same, same idea. It's really looking at those implementation items and those action items and kind of the status of that. Question three is really where, what has changed? And we talked about some of the action items we're working on, and there may be changes that come out of that. And then recommendations, this is where we have the annual basis or as necessary. So that's kind of the summary of it. I do think that we, on that last page of the recommendations, page 86, I think we want to remove the specific, the reference to specific actions to be updated. So amendment to a comp plan, amendment to implementation items, to keep it flexible so that next year, in two years, when we get to it, there may be something that is outside of that purview that we can... That ends my presentation.
I think that last comment that you made about those structured recommendations being removed, in a sense, it gives you flexibility. Are there any questions to the board regarding this?
Would agree.
And comments regarded to the frequency of this report?
Well, I did give some thought to that since our last meeting, and I wonder if there was a mechanism where we could have it on the planning commission's agenda once a year, just as a reminder. I think that sometimes we get caught up in the planning that we're working on, and we might not realize there's something significant. It's a mark in time, once a year, to just reflect a little bit. Maybe there's something we need. And if there's nothing, we can send a report over to the governing body to say, we have no report.
And that's kind of what the, yeah. This is kind of is the almost nothing report. And as we talked about before, it's, we're kind of working through this process, and we'll fine tune it as we go through it. And we want to kind of see what works and what doesn't, and we can make those changes moving forward.
That was my initial thought.
And...
At least have it booked at, especially as new members come on and members leave and governing body changes and this board changes. It just keeps it on everybody's radar.
Yeah, and the timing of it, it comes right on the heels of the annual report.
Right.
So it, the timing works out pretty well in that respect. So we'll do the annual report, and then we'll say, oh yeah, we got to do the reexamination report. And like you mentioned, if there isn't anything, there isn't anything.
Right. Those were the two major things, right?
Yep.
Very well done.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we appreciate it. Is there any questions in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the audience, so... You want a recommendation?
Yes.
As presented?
Yeah, as discussed, with the changes as discussed.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you. Yeah, this is kind of uncharted territory for most of the state, so... most of the states. So it's kind of new and it's, it's kind of, we'll see how it goes, but thank you very much.
We like to break boundaries or invent new stuff. And our next agenda item is the comprehensive plan update, not to be confused with the reexamination.
So comprehensive plan update, um, we're working through the transportation plan as we talked about. We had our first public meeting. There's another public meeting scheduled in May that might have to get shifted. Um, as soon as we get that, we'll announce it through the normal channels. The, and I'm fairly certain that meeting, we're going to talk about, the consultant would have done, will have done more analysis. Um, so they'll be presenting some of the results of that analysis. So that's kind of what's going on with that landscapes plan. We hope to have a draft to board of commissioners, um, in early May and we can bring that, that comprehensive plan update in May. Um, we'll talk about that with the planning commission. Um, we're also, we've been developing a GIS based model that allows us to evaluate different scenarios. And it's been longer than anticipated. Um, it's very detailed and there's a lot of moving parts to it. So, um, we've been working through that. And we hope to have some of that wrapped up to kind of show how we can evaluate any changes. So that's the other, other piece that's working and we're looking to go out to RFP to discuss a overlay zone, um, for the Jordan Valley is kind of, we're in the preliminary stages of that and going to be discussing that with, with the board. So yeah, busy.
Is there any questions or comments from the board? I mean, the chat? Chat? Our next agenda item is the transportation infrastructure update. It's engineer bet.
We don't have any updates for you. Unless they, if you have anything to add.
The, I mean, the big ones are the Tillman Street interchange and the Betterman project. Haven't really heard anything on the Betterman project. Um, there were some agreements that were coming through that were required as part of the interchange project. So we're seeing movement on that. Um, I don't know construction date or let date or any of that, but it's, it's moving.
I do know next week for the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study, there'll be a presentation on the Tillman and three oh nine. Or by PennDOT, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Yeah. That just. Any questions or comments? In the chat, I assume. Okay. Our next item is courtesy of the floor. Chat? I'm sure Greg has his courtesy of the floor.
I indeed do. As, as anyone who's checked their email since this afternoon has noted, um, we are looking at having two planning commission meetings in May. Uh, I've had six applications. So definitely going to break that up.
You're good.
Well, the applications are, uh, Saint Joseph the Worker Walkway waiver from land development. I think I mentioned that a month ago.
You did.
They didn't get their application in, so they're coming in in May. Um, another waiver from land development, the Palmero Realty LLC is doing a small addition and they're moving their driveway. Um, that's the vet dermatologist at, um, Crackers Port and Housman Road. So. Okay, that's that one. And then another waiver from land development, Cedar Crest or Cedar Parkway West twenty twenty four improvements. Uh, the county ball fields, the, the county is basically removing a pavilion and tennis court and then moving the tennis court to the west side of the park, uh, adding some pickleball and, um, yeah, of course. And, uh, I think improving a parking area. So those improvements will be replacing, I think, two softball fields that are there.
Yes, from the original plan. And then they're also have some repair and restoration grant that they're using. And that's kind of moving, shifting some of the things around.
Yeah. So that's another waiver from land development. We have a new major plan out, uh, Parkin School District New Operations Center Phase Three. This will be the expansion of their second floor, uh, at the operations center, which had been planned for the future. And I guess the future is now. So that one should be quick. They're not proposing any additional footprint. So we're just looking at parking and utilities and stuff like that. So once again, that one should go quickly. Um, and then to oldies but goodies, Ridge Farm one C will be back. And Nestle Purino wastewater treatment upgrade will also be back. Um, and I'm planning to hold the first four at our regularly scheduled meeting and then the, uh, the last two will be on whatever meeting date we come up with. Yeah, they should go quickly. They should go, but they will take enough time to putting the other two on is prohibitive. So I, I think that's probably going to give us good balance between the two meetings. And if you have checked your email, I did send out a notice that I'd be looking for this. I want to discuss this tonight. But then I sent out a rally, a poll. So I noticed and a number of you actually did respond. That's good. The rally poll goes out to not only you guys, but to staff and to the two applicants. So hopefully everyone will respond reasonably quickly and we'll get a date where we can at least get a quorum. Because I'm already noticing there are dates that some of you just can't make. So we'll have to go with, uh, the greatest amount of quorum we can get.
My initial thoughts are, are you planning to have all the waiver requests in development on the same meeting? Are you going to split them up?
No, the same meeting. Yeah. And then the concept is that if, if they all go through or any that go through will then go directly to, um, the board of commissioners six days later.
Got it.
So.
Are there any comments or questions from the board? Oh, makes sense. Everybody's okay with that? Okay. Any other courtesy of the floor? One's question. Okay. Sounds like we're ready for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you, everyone.